For coming today.
Both.
Well, let's add choice. Anyway. So, um, we have a motion to approve the agenda.
Someone.
Second by Gary. Second. Kevin, discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Both? Thank you. Public comment? Okay. No public comment. Thank you. Consent items. Do we have a motion to approve the consent items this evening?
Someone.
Motion made by Gary.
Second.
Second by Mimi. Discussion? Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Both? Thank you. Discussion items. Starting off with the youth in high school presentation. Mr. Long.
Thank you. I think you heard from the elementary and the MNBA last month and just announced that the high schools term. One thing that, you know, I thought about really coming into this year and the last couple of years, one thing that the legislation did is this world's best workforce. And I think that's such a great term. And it's a great term for us to really think about and for me to think about, my staff to think about, isn't that really what we want to create? Isn't that why we're here is trying to have the world's best workforce? And so what are those things that we need to do? So that's something I'm trying to ask, you know, leading and learning and that, that's a piece of that, how we get these kids ready. We do tons and tons of things, you know, at this school. I think we have a great community, great teachers, they do lots of things. But three really big things that we're working on this year. The first, as some of you are aware, we had staff members that went to a Safe and Civil Schools Conference. And they came back so excited and they worked late nights, really trying to understand how to really manage a classroom, you know, and being what you call stoic. And if you can think of the word stoic and really what that means, and I think most of us probably, you know, think of it in terms, one definition, remaining unemotional, especially showing admirable patience and endurance in the face of adversity. And so that's kind of, you know, as we go in the hallway when things are, you know, tough with kids and trying to figure out, okay, how do we motivate these kids? How do we keep, you know, a classroom running effectively so we can get through their curriculum, which is a big deal too? You know, we want them to remain stoic. Well, stoic stands for something too. And what it stands for is structure. We want to make sure we have good structure in the class and the kids understand that structure. We want to teach those things. You know, sometimes behaviors, I mean, all wishes kid would behave. We need to teach it. If a kid doesn't know how to read, we're saying, well, you should just be able to read. We don't do that. We teach them how to read. The same thing with behavior expectations. We need to teach that. We need to observe what's going on in the classroom. You know, we need to listen for things. We need to physically look, well, how's the movement in the classroom? We need to, you know, listen, is the voice is going up or is it going down? Because there may be a problem. Let's cut that off before we have concerns there. So the I interacting, and that's a big piece of, you know, getting to know the kids, interacting with the kids. And the last thing on the stoic is correct. You know, there's a time and a place that we need to correct them. They're not making the right move, so, okay, let's, let's bring them back and we have to have some kind of correction. So stoic, if you're going to hear that, and some of you that have kids in the school and you've seen the syllabus, you've probably seen those, those pieces on there. The other piece is, that goes along with it, is called CHAMPs. And that's really teaching the kids the expectation in class of each of the different activities. You know, when we go into a lab or a group work, what's expected of them? Because sometimes I think we have problems because they don't know what's expected of them. So we need to teach them that. I mean, it's the same thing in business, you know? We can't just throw someone into a new job without training them about the expectations. And some of you in workforces that really are detailed. And that's what we're trying to do for these kids is to get them to understand that. So when we're talking about CHAMPs, we talk about conversation level. Is this a place that we should be talking loud or not? CINDY has done a great job here, you know, part of it is in the library. Is this a silent day? Is this an inside voice day? Or is this a whisper day? You know, so that the kids kind of understand that and the activity. So in the CHAMPs, we have the conversation level that's important. The H is a help. Where are they going to get help on that, you know, activity? And then the A is for the activity. What is that activity? What's going to come out of that activity? M is movement. Can they get up? Can they move around? Can they sharpen their pencil? Can they go ask a friend for help? And the P is participation. How does a teacher know how to participate? And so all of the staff is being, you know, were trained and we really focused at the beginning of the year on that. And then each of the workshop days, we're hitting different components of it. And I think it's really made a difference and the teachers feel really good about things. There are certain things that we just don't allow to have happen anymore. He goes, I have to go get my pencil in my locker and, you know, that used to be something that they'd want to go. They're just trying to leave the room. Or I forgot my book in the locker. We don't allow that to happen. We have the extra books. We have the pencil set. Here it is. You know, if it becomes a problem, we work with the kids, we find out why that is. We want them to stay in that classroom and so that they can learn. So those are the pieces of that stoic and then the CHAMPs and then the S in the CHAMPs means success. We're driving for success in that. Really awesome, awesome things. And I know that the teachers came back so motivated to do well and they presented to the rest of the staff and it really went over quite well there. The other thing is the PBIS. We're continuing to work on that. And that all kind of works together with this, the CHAMPs and the stoic thing or PBIS. We've been doing that for years, but we're still continuing to hit that. We want to reward those great behaviors that the kids have. We're continuing, if you haven't heard about the Breakfast of Champions, that we're rewarding kids for that. Great event there. Prizes, student skits to show how to behave appropriately. We want kids to understand that because that's going to help us in the world's best workforce. Number two thing is the testing. We know that the high school, we've struggled. We've had just dips. But I, the more I look at the data, the more I'm saying, wait a minute, we're out of these dips in time. And I don't believe our kids went from doing super well in sixth grade to seventh grade, not doing so well, and that they just don't get it and they're just, you know, we're just going, oh, we're not teaching anything. I don't believe that's the case for the dip that it is. I believe it's a motivation piece. And so that's a piece of what we're trying to come into play with is how we can motivate these kids. Because sometimes kids are just going, I don't care about this test. What's it mean? It's not a grade, you know? And hormones at the junior high level, okay, how do we, how do we, you know, work with those kids? So, and everyone, and every one of our teachers know that it's, it's that important for these kids to do well. So we really truly get an indication if they understand the stuff. Not motivated, well, okay, I'll just put down Cs, click, 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 and be done. You know, we're, we're thinking of where's the best place to test them? Is it in the classrooms? What do we do? Do we do it over two days, three days, one day? What's the best way? If you read, you know, Winona's article, they said all the kids could go home when they were done with the test, the test really tamed. And again, it's a motivation thing. The kids were only concerned about going home. You know, so what do we do too, just to get these kids to understand? You know, we've learned some things from the elementary. Top part is, you know, we're different than the elementary. We can't do everything exactly the same as, as how the elementary does it. But we're continuing to work on that. Fastbridge is a new thing. We're hoping that it works. We've had some problems launching that. And that's hopefully going to give us some really good data. The Study Island, we're continuing with that. Pearson, our testing site, has learning locators. We're working with those so we know where the kids are at to give them great spots that they can learn, you know, get the stuff and work at home. Previous tests, we're working on that as well. We'll continue our mentoring program because again, that's a piece of getting these seventh graders ready for that junior high. We had the back to school night for seventh and eighth graders. Our ramp up to readiness, we put in smaller groups. Again, it's that connection, real life, and we're trying to work with our seventh and eighth graders in that too, so they can see that connection to their education. They can see that connection, you know, we believe that they're going to want to do better as well. ADSIS program continues to develop. The third thing is the STEAM. And again, really excited about that. All the PLCs, you know, again, initiative we're continuing to work on, are working with ideas in STEAM, how they can incorporate it into their individual curricular areas because that is going to be a key. Again, because they're going to get the relevancy to the real world on some of those, you know, STEAM initiatives that are out there and STEAM things and ideas, you know, you think of the art and you think of, you know, English and especially, you know, English, we're starting to read inferential stuff, we're going to have to read manuals and stuff. That can get into examples of how you're going to use something like that once you get out of here so you can be the world's best workforce. I think I will.
Anybody have any questions for someone?
Are PBIS and the new changes that you're employing, the CHAMPs and stoic, are they dovetailing or are they different?
They really are.
I mean, is it hard to keep it straight? Which one are we doing?
It's not. It's not. And that's a great point because, you know, we had a group that was a PBIS kind of leadership team and then some of those same people went on, you know, to the trip for the Safe and Civil Schools and were going, hey, this is so much alike. Because it is. It's trying to, you know, reward the positive, teach, teach, teach. And that's what PBIS talks about is we need to teach these expectations. We can't just assume that kids know how to behave correctly. And we have to teach and reteach and reteach and we have to remain stoic about it because, and that's a tough thing to do. And so that's something, but I just see a lot of energy with the teachers on that. And they're just really, yeah, I was stoic on that thing and that was really tough and, you know? You've all had kids and, you know, sometimes, you know, it's tough dealing with it. That's a lot of it. Okay, but, and they'll, they'll hold each other accountable. I've seen that too, so that, which is really cool. Yeah, really exciting and I, and hopefully you'll continue to hear more and it's going to be great for our kids.
Thanks. Anybody else?
The other thing that's really good is it gave the faculty consistent terms to use. So as they were talking about some of the problems they, they might be experiencing in their class, they now had that consistent terminology so that they could really help each other better.
Thanks. Okay. Assurance of compliance?
This no longer needs board action. That's why it's a discussion item instead of an action item. But I just wanted to let you see that we have had to do this every year. It's the harassment and violence policy. It's mandatory reporters. And then it's all of those policies that we need to have in place and that was all checked over by the Office of Civil Rights in January. So it's just to verify as a board, you need to know that the verification, that the insurance and compliance has been submitted and we are adhering to all of the statutes about civil rights.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, thanks. Technology Committee Board representation?
In getting, in, in talking to the principals this week and then in preparing for the online school committee, we have the online school committee. We don't really have an onsite school committee as far as having apples to apples, oranges to oranges. With the tech team that we have, that's kind of the day-to-day function in the tech team as far as what software do we have? How is it working? What are the issues that we're having? We might want to look at with the, the January, you, as a board, maybe that you want to consider having a standing onsite school subcommittee, just like we have an online school subcommittee, where we talk about some of those as the tech team comes in and says, okay, this is the research we've been doing. And then has that, that smaller subcommittee working on it instead of working as a whole board on it.
When you said you talked to the principals and as part of the leadership group, is that who you were talking to and thought this may be an idea? Are they, have they thought about who would be part of that, what it'll entail?
Well, and that's, if it's a standing board committee, then they were talking about the fact that if it's an onsite committee, it should probably have, it should probably have teachers on it. It should probably have a student on it. You know, we, we need to have student representation on that because it's, it's their education. But we need to have.
I, I think we're a little off topic because the original, it was brought up originally not to talk about what is maybe listed in this item here in this document. It's not to talk about tech issues that are happening and tickets and how they're resolved, but what is our technology strategy? And when are those discussions occurring? And can a board member be present to help with those discussions? Because I feel like it's important and I feel like we're not giving it the attention that it deserves. I mean, I could say that about the board as a whole. We have an issue talking about strategy. But specifically tech, I mean, how much longer are we going to use the Chromebooks? What's our plan to replace them? Are we going to replace them with something different? That sort of thing. I don't think we as board members need to know there are three tickets and so-and-so has an issue with their email and this tool isn't working. Not that level of detail, but what the tech strategy is.
And then in that, to be a member of this tech team, that's kind of, we're, we're talking about all of those day-to-day tech issues. So I'm, what you're just saying now, it sounds like what you want instead is maybe a, a standing committee from the board as far as dealing with some of those, those, those bigger issues. But we're not going to have tech separate because tech, with that STEAM initiative, the, the technology, the curriculum and the instruction all have to be cohesive and bound together to really make sure it's working. The tech by itself should, it, it's, it's nothing by itself, it's how it's used that's really important. And so you can't say, are we using Chromebooks without looking at what curriculum, what digital curriculum do we have? What, what type of device is really needed for that? What, what do we need to have so the kids can access that digital curriculum without having a Java error, without having a Flash Player error? What kind of equipment, what kind of device is needed? That has to go hand in hand with that digital curriculum conversation and then also the instruction. How are we going to make sure that our teachers really understand how to access all the parts of that curriculum and actually help the, these kids with that device as well? Those three have to be abridged and they have to be interwoven because that's the only way that the, the actual education becomes strong.
Okay.
So what's the stra, so are those, that's fine if they all are at the table, but I don't feel like the strategy discussions for those three are happening in like weekly meetings or bi-weekly meetings. I think there needs to be, because the original question was who is dealing with strategy? And the response that came back was we're doing it in these meetings for IT strategy. And I think that's just, it's not happening right now. Like at the level that, you know, who is analyzing what curriculum we're going to have in three years and what technology we're going to need? And can, do we have the infrastructure in place to handle that? And I know Dependable Solutions is supposed to be doing that for us, but I don't know much about Dependable Solutions. And so I would like a board member involved in these discussions, which I'm not so sure are even happening at this point.
I'm getting kind of confused here, maybe it's just me, but we have Technology Committee Board representation here on here, right?
Right. And that's why I'm wondering.
So what we're talking about here is right now, the way the tech committee is, what they're, you're looking at right now, and correct me if I'm wrong here, they're looking at issues that we're having with technology, not necessarily what we are talking about, where we're going next. And what you're saying is we maybe want to have a, a brick and mortar school meet, committee, whatever you want to call it, where we discuss those things, which are different than what the tech committee goes over. More of what we want at, what Mimi's asking questions and stuff like, you know, where are we going from here? What computers are doing? What programs? All that other stuff. Three years from now. So you're talking two different entities. The tech committee you have now, what they do is they talk, what I'm getting from Mimi is they talk about open problems they're having that need to be repaired. It's not, it's tech, you know, it's service stuff. It's not.
Well, it's boots on the ground as far as, okay, this is the curriculum we.
But that's what you're talking about, the tech committee is talking about technology problems in the school, not what's going on down the road. You know, what new technology we're going to use? Is that what you're saying? Because I haven't been to one of these technology committee meetings, you know, at all, and maybe I should go there and then I can maybe speak on it. But I, at this moment in time, which, which way is it being done? Is that just talking about we have four tickets that need to be repairs on some computers?
We're not just talking about tickets. We're talking about with that, though, we've had one meeting so far. And what we discussed at that meeting is what software do we actually have? When's the renewal? What, who's actually using it? The evaluation of what we have because we have to first figure out who the point of contact is for that. Is it really being implemented? All those kind of day-to-day things and then.
So if we have a, not a online school, a brick and mortar school committee meeting, what they'll do is take somebody from the, that entity, the tech committee or whatever you want, you know, whatever you're calling it, and, you know, teachers and all these other people and kind of come up with the plan that we're, like Mimi's talking about is where are we going next? What are we doing next? That type of thing. Is that why you're bringing that up under this? Kind of under this technology committee meeting conversation?
That, that visioning committee that I think you want to be a part of, that, that would be that standing board committee. And this one is just what's working? What curriculum are we looking at? What, what, what would work for that? What, and then as we're, we're talking about that, that the information, there would have to be information brought from that committee to that standing committee, just like with the online committee. Lisa, yeah, there's lots of committees, but for the online committee, Lisa and I meet every Friday. So we're meeting about operations every Friday.
And that's part of the tech committee?
Angela and I are meeting all the time for the online schools because there's all kinds of other day-to-day meetings happening. But then for the online committee meeting, when that gets together, that's when we're talking about, like at this one, we talked about staffing projections. This is when we're talking about the enrollment. This is when we're talking about.
So you're saying make another committee and have them main worry about the brick and mortar and take information from collective group of different people or different groups or committees? And then look at what we want to see is where the school is going? Whether it be programs, computers, you know, what we're doing next? Is that what you're saying? Is there a list of what you, you said you talked to the principals and that's kind of what they were talking about?
Well, it was an idea that, that it made more sense there and I started thinking about the fact that, you know, we, we do have the online committee that's separate and we don't really have an onsite committee the same way.
So it seems like a really complicated way when, I guess, so I'll go, I'm just going to raise my concern again. I'm concerned about technology. We have in there that we're STEAM, we want to focus on STEAM. I'm concerned about the T in STEAM. I'm concerned about the technology. And we've hired Dependable Solutions to provide IT strategy for us. And I don't want them doing that in a vacuum without, I would like to be involved in that.
So have you gone to the, did you go to?
I'm not invited. This whole thing is saying we're not invited.
No, you're invited and you, a board member can go to any meeting.
No, this says that she meets with, I have never been to one of these meetings.
This year it says.
But I said if.
Board meeting has not been managed.
It would be a new president and, no, I have never been invited nor.
Well, I would say you should go to the tech.
Well, and I don't want to be involved in the day-to-day.
No, no, I mean, I don't know what it involves.
Dependable Solutions is providing strategy.
You talk about the day-to-day stuff.
Well, then that's not what we want to be part of. Then we need to come up with maybe something different. I think do some more.
So have we written a check to Dependable Solutions? Have they, have they provided strategy for us? Have we written a check for strategy? So when does that come into play? That's, that's what I'm concerned about. That's what I want to help be, I want board, it doesn't have to be me, there's other perfectly qualified people on the board to be a part of that as well. But I, I want to be involved in the tech strategy, the IT strategy. I don't want Dependable Solutions to be writing our IT strategy.
Well, Dependable Solutions wouldn't be writing the IT strategy in a vacuum anyway.
Oh, they do.
The, the whole thing was about working with people.
So I want to be in those meets, so whatever you want to call the group that meets with them.
So why don't you do this, why don't you sit down with the principals? If you guys had already started this initial conversation, come up with some, before the next meeting maybe, or send out a, an email on some of the ideas that they had and who would be part of this and what would they be looking at? Like you said, with the online school. Right. On the online school, we have an agenda, what we kind of go over.
So would they bring to the board, create their recommendations on the future or will also make sure that we would approve the path that they're going down, right?
Correct. So it would be basically like the online school, the finance committee or the facility committee. They would have their meeting on where we're taking the school. You know, Joe, what computers are going to be the next computers for the kids? What are we, what's our strategy as far as technology? What are we looking at doing down the road? And then it would bring it to the board and whoever's on that committee would be like we do with the other ones, present it, talk about it. That's my assumption. Would that be anybody else's assumption? No?
Well, I, I mean, so, and when I, when I read this item thing, it says at the bottom, this tech slash leadership team. Is this the leadership team or is this the tech team?
And that's, last year when we had the standard leadership team that we'd always had before. It had.
So technology is a point of discussion amongst the leadership team members?
Yep.
That's what you're presenting as a tech committee? It's not really a tech committee. It's the, it's.
It's the onsite leadership team.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that, I'm, I'm, I'm on board with Mimi here from the standpoint that our technology has a major financial impact on our budgeting and our choices and our priorities and our planning. And we used LOR money to make a big investment in Chromebooks, I believe, and we made a decision at the board level to go with a contract for the teachers laptops to be with Apple. But to look at that in an ongoing fashion, there is planning and budget that needs to be played forward. And I think that's the level that we need to be looking at as far as infrastructure, devices. Are we going to let families check the devices out? If this is the new textbook, how are we checking them out? What are those policies and procedures? You know, how do we move in that direction? And if it's the brick and mortar school, that's fine. But I think to have a brick and mortar committee is that, you know, what things are we going to talk about? I mean, we're not going to, we're not going to be making, you know, strategy in the classroom or in the buildings.
Well, no, but it's, if that one-to-one initiative is going to be a one-to-one initiative where they can bring it home, that, that definitely changes things.
But are, who's talking about that? Or are we talking about that?
That would probably be something that would be brought up at that.
Because right now it's not being brought up.
No.
And that's what we're saying is that's a concern. That's Mimi's concern. I think it's everybody's concern is where are we going? Who's watching this? What's happening? No discussion with us on it. We discuss, like you said, the money we spent to buy stuff.
My, my, a little bit of my concern is I don't want to, I'm not interested in forming another board committee that just receives information instead of being part of a working committee that is participating in the conversation looking forward. That's, I, I think if we're going to form another committee, then it needs to be a committee that gets to participate in that conversation and be a voice at that table. And I think it's perfectly appropriate to have a student there and perhaps a community member because they may have, you know, interest or points to bring up about technology and the challenges that invites or doesn't invite or what they'd like to see their school provide. So I think that's good, that's okay too. But I just don't want to be receiving information. I don't.
No, no, that's, I mean, it'd be like when we do facilities, we're interacting, doing doing a lot of the stuff, I feel, like, you know, finance committee, we're, you know...
I don't know, on finance committee, it's more just getting, you know, learning, a lot of it's learning, and here are your choices, and you understand them before the rest of the full board does, but how much are you setting the, let's prioritize technology, so let's put more of whatever expendable money there is into technology and less on facilities.
Don't go to that level, no.
But that would be planning.
No, that's, yeah, that's a good idea, so that's your thoughts on that committee.
That's my thoughts.
Gary, or Kevin, your thoughts?
No, I agree, I mean, I voiced my concern before, I mean, I feel like sometimes, you know, at least the online committee, we receive, but we don't, we don't give, and so, you know, it acts differently than any other committee I've been on in terms of, you know, activity, regular meetings, being involved, and actually having some voice in where you're going, and so if you're going to have this tech committee, and if you're going to have a committee that actually is going to be looking at planning in the future, then they're going to have to have some ability to have a say in it, the board.
Okay.
Well, it looks to me like the people involved in, that are listed there are the closest to the day-to-day operations of the technology, and are the closest to seeing how it works, what the problems are, what needs to change, what are the criteria for replacing, if that's an option, or being looked at, and so I don't see anything wrong with that, now, it says tech/leadership team, now, it almost looks like there are two teams there, because I wouldn't say Dependable Solutions and Becky would be part of the leadership team that was involved, principals.
Becky was part of the leadership team last year, because as a tech integrationist, if you don't plan for training the teachers on how to use the new tech, it's not going to happen.
But that's a technology issue, so that would make sense, so I think that's the right mix.
You don't think a board member needs to be involved?
Well, the board certainly needs to receive input from them, information from them about what they're looking at, but these are the people that are the closest to the issue, they're the closest to the day-to-day operations, they're the closest to the technology, I would defer to their recommendations, I want to hear what the recommendations are, what the information is, and certainly look at alternatives, but I trust our administrators.
I don't distrust the administrators.
It's not a matter of trust, but it's just, I have faith in them.
Well, I do too, but I've looked at other school districts, Caledonia has a tech committee, of which boards, board members are members, La Crescent has a tech committee, board members are on that, I have talked to the board members of Elgin, Plainview, Elgin, Millville, at MSBA meetings, who have told me what they do at their tech committee that they are part of, there are many school districts moving into the technology with the cost, and there are some that have, there's a tech levy in some places, right, I mean, financially, sometimes you have to, you know, depending on, we're not that big, but I'm just saying, that's not an, it's not an unreasonable place for board members to...
Be part of.
Be part of, and be learning and understanding, moving into the 21st century and world's best workforce.
But not necessarily the way this one is set up.
Well, I don't think, I don't think there's anything wrong with that, I'm fine, but I just don't think that addresses what the concern coming from at least some of the board members here is.
With those committees, are they standing board committees? Yes, yeah.
Well, you know, I'll take issue with you on this one, Gary, and I agree, these are the people probably closest to the day-to-day, but the fact of the matter is, is that there are board members here that are pretty good resources, that have some knowledge in these areas, and they may not, and don't need necessarily to deal with the day-to-day, but looking at the bigger picture of day-to-day, but, I mean, and to me, it's just a matter of resource, I mean, is the board a resource, and, you know, to be utilized positively? I think so, that's why I think, I've always been involved, I always think the board should be involved, because there's a lot of expertise on this table.
I work with technology every day, that's what I do.
Right.
But it's not in an educational setting, and it's a totally different focus, I don't think I could bring much, I would like to learn from them, what they're proposing and looking at, but I couldn't, I couldn't bring anything to a committee like this.
Well, I can't, I'm not, I can't, I can't, but I think there are other people at this table that could.
I think, Joe, your thoughts?
I mean, just like there are people at this table that can bring financial expertise to, you know, to understanding and helping, you know, move the thing in the direction that maybe the board would, as board members would like to see.
I think Kevin, I mean, it's great kind of discussion, but I want to see the value when he gets drawn up on the values, and what we're going to get out of it, and who's going to be in it, but, you know, where are we going to take this, more detail, I mean, discussion is great, I mean, so, I can't really tell you right now, I don't know what I'm boarding on, so...
Ron, any input?
Well, I think that we have certainly approved technology as we got along, no, I don't know if anybody at this table knows exactly how we're using all that technology right now, so how can we go looking at more options if we're not all sure, maybe I'm just talking for myself, I'll talk to them later, how it's being used now, and we need to have the people that are using it present some options on what they'd like to see coming down the road, I don't know if you just do that as a board, or if you have a committee, but I think we need to know what's happening now, we need to know what's on the horizon, and...
Mimi, you have any more input?
I just, I just, my view has changed, because I, well, I think over the last year, we haven't been focused on strategy, because we haven't had so many on staff to do that, and I am concerned, I think it's a risk to have a company be doing that for us, again, I don't know much about them, and to me, it's just a risk, and if we have some board involvement, it makes me feel better, so that's what's changed in my mind, I think if we had a person on staff that we were all comfortable with to, that came to board meetings periodically, and kind of knew what our strategy was, and had worked here for years and was writing it, I would have a different comfort level than I do with a company that I don't know much about that's also writing the strategies potentially for numerous other schools as well, so, that's why my perspective is...
And if we could have found that one person?
I know, and we are where we are, but I'm just, it's a risk in my mind, and I'm trying to minimize the risk, and get us with the best end result that we can, and, like I said, I don't think them writing something in a vacuum, or saying, hey, you know, this is what we've seen in other schools, and just proposing it, is necessarily going to be the best fit for us, because I want to be the best school we can be.
Well, they shouldn't be proposing, I mean, they'll have to bring stuff to us before anything gets done.
Well, right, it'll come to whatever committee, for, I mean, I wouldn't expect Dependable Solutions to come and present to the board, there's some sort of group that's going to be working with them.
If that's what that group is going to do, then, yeah, so...
But that's not every meeting that that group does, there's going to have to be, you know, dedicated meetings to talking about strategy, in my opinion, otherwise, you'll never find the time to do it.
So you're going to gather more information?
I, you said La Crescent, Caledonia, PE, P E M?
Those are the ones that I found on, just on the Google.
Okay, I could reach out to their superintendent, yeah.
Why don't you start there, and we'll go from there, you got everybody's inputs, so now you have something you can ask, as far as questions, so, anybody else have anything else to put in, if you do, send it out to her, training, progress on, we talked about last time, for newly elected board members?
There's an entire list that, this is from MSBA, as far as a packet that is supposed to be compiled for new board members.
Oh, I remember that.
Is that something that you'd like me to put together for a new board member? Is that something that you would want to volunteer to help with different things, to compile that for a new board member, do you think this would be helpful for a new board member?
I don't even think we have all that, a lot of it is available.
Yeah, a lot of it's there, I mean, a lot of that.
A lot of it is getting the links, and being shown where they are, I don't think we need hard copies unless...
I think in the past, when we had just people flocking to get on the board, that we actually brought in candidates beforehand, and kind of gave them an idea of what they were in for.
I know, I always liked, yeah, they asked you a bunch of questions, you had to write down your ideas and thoughts and direction and so on.
Well, I think it's nice for them to be somewhat up to speed, like, it's a change...
I don't think any of these things you're showing me are anything that's, you know, too much information for somebody to at least look over and...
I'd be happy to work with you on compiling at least a portion of it, I mean, it might be nice for them to, you know, primer on what's the role of the board policy, and we hire you, I mean, so superintendent's job description might be a good thing for the new person to have, persons, superintendent's yearly goal statements, we have those, you know, access to the rest of the documents is usually in the minutes.
Joe, did you have something you want to say?
You know, like to Ron's point, would it be wrong to give him a call and ask him, you know, maybe to attend a, maybe not the first board meeting, but the second meeting each month, and so he comes...
Having been at some board meetings.
Yeah.
I know he's been in meetings in the past, but keep him up to date about what we're doing.
It's good, if you're coming into it, unfortunately, because somebody may be...
And you're sure you don't want to do a regimen?
As a new board member, it would be a good, like Joe said, I think, from now till the end of the year, maybe good for that person to come in, maybe once a month.
Maybe give him a list of all our committees that we have also, because, you know...
January is the organizational meeting.
Well, exactly.
That'd be his first meeting almost, so...
But I think that would be a good opportunity for that person to kind of be where we're at today, what we're talking about, I mean, the more we can help them, I think it's better for them.
And the other thing that was brought up, do we, what about the MSBA Phase One, Phase Two, is that the January, is that something that...
That's in January, I mean, we're already a month...
Yeah, I think that's...
That'd be a good place to start, right off the bat.
Yeah, and I think, like, if we go through some of this, when they go to the meeting in January, those, some of those questions or stuff may come up, and they have a little understanding on it, instead of just going up to them blindly.
And for that MSBA, as a board, it's always just been, if you can, is that something that you want to require a new board member to attend, is that not, is that...
When I talk to MSBA about it, they recommend that you have everybody go, I mean, but that's them, to the Phase One, Phase Two.
I thought that was kind of a requirement, pull back from that.
Well, they, no, it's mandatory, but you can't hold anything against somebody, so I would say, yeah, you want to go, I mean, when you...
But I mean, you know, people have jobs outside of board, so they might not be able to just be mandated to go and clear their work schedule, so...
Yeah, it might just be as easy as, you know, having the superintendent call the individual and say, can you come in and spend a half an hour just chatting about the position, and start from there, and see...
I think that makes sense.
Offer assistance in educating, whatever, but I think reaching out is not a bad thing, especially, I don't think there's any hoop and a foot for a write-in that I'm aware of.
If you're going to invite a board member to come in...
Well, I don't know that it's, I don't know that a board member should, before they're elected.
That's right.
I think it's okay for the superintendent to say, this is what you might be getting yourself into, you know, as a candidate, but then after the election, then an officer or a designated board member might want to have that conversation, be a mentor or something.
Why not beforehand?
Yeah, the chair.
Because they're not elected yet, and, not elected yet.
No, I guess I'm, all I'm just talking about is, you know, kind of going through some protocol.
Mike, let's just start with you.
The other item I want to bring up is maybe you would want a different date for a meeting, or something like that, to be thinking about it, yeah, to meet on Tuesdays, maybe that's a rub for him or something too, like Michael said, maybe it works Tuesday nights or something, I don't know, so...
That's all right, the students like me on YouTube better, because they can fast-forward me.
Yeah, I think maybe your kids want that, okay, anything else on it?
No, it's just, I want to know what you guys want, what you'd like to do.
I like Kevin's idea of just reaching out, and...
Start from there.
Start from there, and see what he's, might appreciate the...
Conversation.
Maybe encourage him to sign up, see if he can get the time to go to the Phase One, Phase Two.
Yeah, let him know when those dates are, in case it's...
Give him a heads up.
Okay.
Okay. Tell him you'll pay for it.
Yeah, MSHSL, what is your grant application?
Every year, this is based on legislative funding, and this year, the funding did not come through, but they still have the foundation board, so I'm not sure if that means that they're working on getting the legislation and getting it funded again, and maybe since Mr. Lundberg is here and on the foundation board, he would like to speak to that, if he doesn't mind?
Yeah, the State High School League Foundation, that's the one, if you remember, the tax dollars generated from state tournaments went into a foundation, so that was legislation, you know, for about six years, and it was about two years at a shot this last time, with all this legislative stuff, last-minute things, and they thought it was going to be in, it wasn't, if it was going to be a special session, the governor said this needs to be in it, can have a special session, but that's where the money comes from, is from, you know, the state tax dollars that would have been, you know, collected, so right now, the state coffers are getting all the state high school league tax dollars for when you go to a tournament, which tax put on it, and that goes into the state coffers now, opposed to the foundation, the foundation used that money then to give back to schools to help kids free and reduce lunch, to be able to, that's where this grant was always the first round, to help pay for their activity fees, and so that's what we use that money for, and then there was a second round that we got creative to do different things, coaching, you know, clinics and books, and, you know, those types of things that we used for Round Two, but right now, it's essentially, it's done until legislation gets passed saying, now we're going to do this again, don't know if it will happen or not.
So we put that on here.
Just to let us know what's happening?
Tell your legislators and tell them we want that, we've used it, we know that we love it.
Yeah, okay, anybody have any questions?
How much do we get out of that?
How much should we get, Asher, out of that?
With the two together, we probably get $2,500 a year we've done.
And what's your plan to take care of those, since we won't be getting it in that first round?
We have money still in the account that, you know, we just, we reserve for that, and if a kid, you know, if I, or a kid just goes to the grant, we just transfer the money over for that kid's user fee, you know, from that foundation, so right now, we're still okay, if not, I just, you know, it comes out of board pay after that, I guess.
No, but if it becomes an issue, please bring it...
There's not much...
Okay, so long-term facility?
And what I have here are next steps, other than every two weeks saying the punch list is getting smaller at our next board meeting, we are going to have a five o'clock facility meeting where that punch list for each of the contractors and the subcontractors is getting completed as far as what's being done, we're still going through the commissioning process to make sure that boilers and the heat system is functioning adequately, it's functioning the way it was designed, every little sensor inside all of the VAVs, which I have no idea what they are, but they're up in the ceiling, but every little sensor has to, they have to make sure that every sensor is communicating with the computer, and the computer is reading it correctly, and so it's not an overnight process, it is, it takes a lot of time to make sure, because we've got a lot of different, a lot of different connections and sensors, and it's a huge system, so we're still going through that commissioning process, as I've said before, by the end of this month, that should be, that should be done, and everything should be good to go, but then, okay, so as that is really getting done, what next, and I know a lot of you have talked about individual things that you'd like to see, but I haven't really gotten a board consensus on any of them, as far as where you'd like to, as a board... to, as a board collectively, where you want to go next. As a board collectively, what things are priorities? As a, as a board collectively, instead of individual voices, but as a group, where we're moving on the next step?
Facilities? You're talking facilities? Okay. But you've got a list, I mean, people have given you information.
And at board meetings, we, you've talked about that too, but it's.
I think we ought to collect them, get them together, see where we're at at the, when we have a facility meeting, if you have the list, bring them to that, listen to the, like we did in the past, the principals, you know, and, you know, and you, whoever else, or, you know, what others would like. We make the list and then we can resend it to the board and have the board kind of go through it like we did in the past and.
I, I kind of need a little education on the difference between what qualifies as long-term facilities maintenance and what is new planning for facilities, just from a funding point of view. I know that some of those things, they just get crossed in my mind. So when you say what's next, I mean, you're talking about long-term facilities maintenance, right? So there's got to be a list that facilities committee has already got.
Right, well, last, what we talked about last time is take what we've done, take that off the list as far as what we've done and look at what's left.
And look at the rest of it.
And then build off of that.
Okay.
And then at the same time for long-term maintenance, as far as maintaining what we have, what do we need to do to do that? You know, funding wise, budgeting wise.
Can that come out of that funding or is that something else?
Right, and that's what I need to know. Those are those things because building on, that was in the plan, but building on is a part of long-term facility maintenance. Doing some remodel in the existing preschool would be part of long-term facility maintenance, but building on a building where we're knocking down the house would not be part of long-term facility maintenance.
That's a separality.
But it's a separate entity, but.
Right.
If you want to do that, it doesn't make sense to, you've got to look at both aspects because do you want to fix up or do you want to build?
We want to invest money in something.
I mean, facilities committee should be grinding through this and bringing it to the full board for.
Yeah, we will.
And that's what we talked about, right? We're, because we are going to talk about the building addition, right?
Yep.
I mean, we have, time is ticking, right?
Yep, that's, when we have our meeting, we've got some quotes that have gone out and hopefully we'll have it all back by then. And again, gather the list of what we've gotten done, what we still have on the list. And then by then, hopefully you'll have a list of what we need to do as far as cost maintenance. You know what, maybe needs to be tweaked so we know what we have left and where we need to go next.
Now, was preschool remodeling a part of that plan?
No, it wasn't.
No, so I want to hear what the ideas are for that. You've mentioned that as a new, you know, what are, what are the ideas? Because that's new.
Right. And that's going to be part of our conversation next, in the next two weeks.
Okay.
We just got to get some numbers yet together, right, before we can come up with any. When they're working on that, right?
Where's the teardown at for the?
That's a part of our conversation.
And we've now gotten two.
Oh, two.
Two years down now.
So when we talk about this, like the building addition, we're going to talk about, like, kind of all the facilities and the various ideas that are out there?
What we've done in the past, we've pretty much not limited it. We pretty, what do you like, you know? I mean, in that most of our conversation, Gary, if you had all the money you wanted to do whatever you wanted, what would you like to do? And that's kind of how we.
But then you have to put them into, along with this qualifies.
Well, yeah, exactly. What we do is say, what do you, you know, there's needs and wants. You know, you kind of separate them and go through all that.
Right.
And then you look at budget funding, where are you going to get the money? How are you going to do this? How are you going to do that? You know, if we're going to do this long-term, when are we going to do it? If this is a five-year plan, are we going to invest money here?
So you guys are going to do some of the analysis and then bring it to the board so we can have a discussion?
Yeah.
So.
We break down some of it, it won't be obviously clean, but.
I'm still trying to figure out how the free, like if we want to do free preschool, how, I mean, can we just add as its own agenda item or do we need to talk about it in the facility?
That's more of a big budget thing.
Add as a budget thing that we have to talk to when, right, about free.
But if we, if we do free, that means that we give up the money we're getting on Pathway One and Pathway Two scholarships.
I'm not, I'm not confident that that's true because I think they reimburse the cost of the program, not what we actually built.
We, we have to say what we charge for the program.
Okay. So I just want to know how much that is. I mean, are we giving up three or $4,000? I mean, I, I just feel like there's lots of obstacles thrown out there, but I think as, I don't want to speak for the board, but I feel strongly that we should do that. I think it, it provides a lot of benefit to the school and I think there's others on the board that feel that way too.
Well, I think.
I just don't know how to keep it moving forward and it seems like it's a logical discussion if you're talking about remodeling the preschool.
Well, it would be part of that discussion, but as far as the money allocate, I think we talked about in the facility meeting, I mean, the finance meeting we had.
Well, we don't know any of the numbers.
No, but I mean, that's, we need to get that information for the finance committee so we can look at it like you're asking, if we do this, how much are we going to lose and can we afford to bring it in from somewhere else?
But I think if she strongly wants it, it can be part of the agenda, right?
For the facilities or the finance?
Finance.
Finance, yeah. I mean, we, it'll be part of the facilities as far as what we're discussing.
Can we put it on the agenda and just talk about it further? I guess, I feel like we talk about it. I just, I don't know what it takes to get it implemented.
Finance would be.
Whenever we schedule a meeting.
Mm-hmm.
I know we talked about it at the last meeting as far as how much money would involve and how much we would lose if we changed it. Did we come up with a number? I don't remember.
No, we made up numbers.
I know we discussed it, but is there?
This is a conversation beyond money.
Right.
It's not just the money. There's more involved.
We don't, we don't know if you need more teachers then, if more people came, I mean, you'd have to roll out the whole plan.
Yeah, and then you, it's a space issue too because then it would.
It might be a space issue.
Right.
There's a certain point where it becomes a space issue. We need to know what that point is and do we cut it off?
Business has something to do with looking at all of our possibilities. I mean, right now, you're kind of focusing on something that we don't even know if everybody's interested in.
Yeah, well, that's why I'm bringing it up. Should we talk about it when we're talking about that stuff? I, I don't know.
Well, then we will have, because I know when we talked about on the finance committee, I know that's something I said we were discussing, then we talked, facilities as far as if we do this, are we, you know, do we have space for it? And what do we have to do to have that space? As far as having it on the agenda, we can have it on the agenda to discuss, but I think we need to talk more because I don't think there'd be enough answered on it when we had our finance committee meeting. Did we?
Well, I, you know, I do think this is, it's a piece of a whole, but you, it's, it's also something that has to do with the Minnesota State Legislature. There is a movement afoot to provide more support to school districts for preschool. That doesn't mean that we should delay the conversation, it just means that also has to be a part of the conversation.
And that's one of the things we had in the finance committee meeting is if there is funding available for stuff, what will it maybe be available for?
There's going to be a big push by MREA and I don't know MSBA's platform, but I know MREA in their listening session saw that, we heard that from every superintendent that was at the meeting we were at as a meeting.
And MASA is, is pushing toward the 4K within the schools instead of having a vulture system.
And with the Dayton's, this could be, this is potentially his legacy issue. I mean, this is the thing he wants to go out on. I mean, there are just other things in play as part of that conversation, I think.
You know, I still need to keep on top of.
There's, there's a lot of stuff.
So that would be part of our discussion too. Why is any of that information going to trickle out?
End of May, yeah.
Okay.
And, and maybe probably at 11 o'clock on the last night of the session.
But we could have all the data in line. We could have the numbers available. We could know what the, you know, what it's going to cost us to do.
Because we've got the projection on the number of four-year-olds, the projection on the number of three-year-olds.
So that's planning. It's not a bad thing.
But I, I don't think that would, should have much bearing on the house, actually. I mean, if, you know, it's a, if it's a manger and an issue that it needs to.
Oh, yeah, that's.
And then what happens after that is part of this conversation, but it isn't the house.
The house is a separality.
The house, the house, the house has squirrels.
That does not do that, so.
Squirrels, so.
Yes.
Okay, so. Are the bids you've received for doing it this fall yet?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Anything else on that since we kind of got off track on a little bit?
Yep.
Okay, old business, I asked for discussion approval, we don't have any? New business? Approval of third quarter board pay that Todd wants to take?
Motion approved.
Motion made by?
Second.
Second by Kevin. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Opposed?
Policies for first reading, 512, 531, and 533. Again, it's first reading. Were you doing anything specific? They should be looking into there, Michaeline?
Yeah, right. Who, like the wellness committee, isn't there a wellness committee and how often do they meet and when have they had?
Once every year or two.
Once every year or two? Are you on it? Are you the guy on it?
I think I was at one time.
Yeah, he's the guy on it.
He's always the ones that be there for years.
I can ask him.
I just wondered how, I mean, I never hear anything about what's happening from the wellness committee.
Well, you're not at that meeting.
We use that.
Well, it's been a little time since I saw that.
We used to meet regularly. And maybe that's why.
That's when there was some new policies and some things as well.
Okay, I can.
Well, good, well. Well, let's talk about it. Okay, so announcement, important events. Okay. Okay, meetings or committee updates. We had an online school board meeting. Mimi, you want to?
Um.
Enlighten everybody.
I don't know really what to enlighten them with. I mean, we talked about audit results, which we actually talked about, I think, in the meeting before, so you guys all got to hear about that. Enrollment numbers, which are down slightly. Staffing, which they're trying to get staff in place. We talked about at what threshold they should hire teachers and if they should maybe kind not getting caught where they have students and not enough teachers for those students. So to hire them in advance enough and at what threshold and we basically just told them to use their best judgment that we didn't think we needed to create some sort of magic threshold number that they can do what they need to as far as staffing. Marketing and public relations, we might have some stuff for you guys to look at, like a template. I haven't actually looked at it. I can't remember what we talked about. Oh, system, curriculum and system changes, just the changes to the new.
Curriculum that's coming out.
Oh, yeah, or whatever you guys use. I can't remember.
It was Summit, we talked about a program, they have Summit program that's out there that they're looking at, having some changes that came out. We didn't get on top of it, right? We're looking at it for next year because this was the first year of initiating it. So they're hoping that the bugs, they had a lot of issues with it this year, which is good that we weren't involved in it because we don't need any more of that. So next year, it looks like there's a lot of good things and there may be some other things that Angela was, was liking that may be coming out under the same type program that will be available for the online. And so that came up in discussion and I think Cody's going to check into that a little bit more and get back with us. And I think that was our primary thing on that, correct? And then anything else was miscellaneous? We kind of talked to them about working together a little more, getting a little, you know, we always talk about the brick and mortar and the online talking and communicating. They were assuring us that they are communicating, but we asked them to give us a little more in-depth information on what are they communicating, how is it working, how is it not working, you know, that type of thing. So we had some questions and concerns and more to come hopefully at the next meeting. Anything else you thought?
No, I think that's it. Oh, oh, online, kids taking classes, we talked through 50, we said?
Forty, forty-seven.
Almost 49, almost 50. Here are taking MNBA classes and in Caledonia, it's only 10 and nine. Just one off tonight. And we brought up the fact that we need to talk again with Caledonia, that it's been a while since I think anybody has communicated with them and see how that is working out.
Yeah, you know, the pro purpose of us giving them like 50 seats was when we had the aid program for FFA or, you know, that different options because we've always had a lot of kids that were interested in it, but we didn't have it available. And then we had worked out with their principal and our principal that the guy would come here and do some training, correct? There was some classes.
Teach a class.
Would teach a class here and then go there. Well, evidently they have a new principal and evidently that wasn't on their agenda and they restructured their old class.
That was last year.
Last year, so we never had that opportunity.
But then this year, did any of you sign up for the Caledonia classes?
No, it didn't work into our schedule at all.
It didn't work into our schedule or they didn't lie and sign up for it?
Didn't work into our schedule where they.
Did you have kids that were interested in it?
Yeah, a couple. Every year, it's only a couple. It's, it's not like it's a lot of kids, it's only a couple of kids.
But it's fewer than 10?
Oh, it's like two to three kids.
But it's still something we need to look at. What, if we're going to give them the opportunity to have 50 of our seats for their kids, in turn, we should see if there's something that they have to offer that our kids can benefit from.
And we still have to see if any of the kids, our kids are involved in FFA.
Right. We just don't want to, you know, part of the discussion is, well, maybe we should look at changing that whole, you know, we give you something, you know, we're not getting anything, are we done with that? Again, my, my personal feeling is where we don't want to burn that bridge, let's see what we can do as far as work together as two schools. So maybe there's something that they have that we need and they don't work together that way. So more to come, I'm sure Todd is going to be talking to them, right? So that was part of our conversation.
Yeah, Todd wasn't in that conversation, but he's bunked out right now.
He'll be sending an email, don't worry. Just joking, yeah, okay. Okay. Anything else?
Future agenda items, we do need to do the world's best workforce. We've got the template that needs to be completed for MDE and we need to do the public hearing on that. If we, we need to have the public hearing, we have a choice of either November 1st or November 15th. So I need to know for an agenda item, when.
Do we have a lot on the agenda in the first?
Is the district advisory committee going to meet?
Right, and that's why I, I need to know when we're presenting to back up from there.
Are you guys going to get together before that, not us all?
Probably set it for the 15th so you have some time to get whatever needs to get together for making, killing off the template or.
Okay.
Cause you're part of that, right, Michaeline?
Well, yeah, but we haven't met or I haven't, we have not, we've had trouble over the summer getting people together and then it's been a little bit of email, but we need to do a better job of having that committee convene. So maybe that'll happen.
So we decided for the 15th, I think it would be.
Well, it just gives Crin a little more time to organize the, a committee meeting, I think.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody have anything else?
I, are we on C? Or are we...
Yes.
Yeah, we're on C right now.
I wanted to thank Crin for the great job at the all-school reunion, explaining that, Ron, you were there, didn't you? You hear what he said? And Gary, I thought, yeah, you explained it. I think that the public that was there was appreciative of hearing exactly how the funding went and what the projects were. I thought it was very nicely done. Thank you.
Did you have many people for the tour here?
I think we had between forty and fifty.
Really?
Yeah, that came over here. And they were all in awe of the gym. Yeah, the other parts, the windows, oh, these are nice. And then they got to the gym.
Well, you set them up. You told them that this is the showcase, so they're like...
They did, they did have a couple, one on the pads, the far end, and I said, the new pads are there and they just haven't been installed. And then a couple people talked about the collapsible doors into the bandroom stage area, the fact that now that the rest of the gym has been redone and looks so good, those doors kind of stand out like a sore thumb.
Did you say we would take donations to replace them?
The last time they fixed up, the board members did it.
Oh.
Terry Reitberg was the one that took that out. I do know that.
But it's...
Just saying.
Just saying.
But that's, that's something, they do kind of, but I think we would have to look at...
Long-term facilities maintenance, put it on the list.
Yeah, the list.
Put it on the list.
If you don't have it written, it won't be done. Okay, anything else about that?
No, I just, not for me.
Okay. Anybody? Do we have motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion by Joe? Second by our discussion. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Have a great evening.
A pleasure.